For the next item, I have for the board an update on safety and security. As you know, this has been an active and ongoing discussion over the past months related to our efforts related to weapons scanners and are pleased to provide you an update as well as a recommendation for which we'll be seeking the board's support this afternoon. Mr. Pritchard?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Cashwell. Thank you for the opportunity to provide updates on school safety and security in HCPS. As you know, we have been working for several months to evaluate metal detectors and weapons scanners for potential use in our schools. That process has included speaking with and visiting school divisions that have implemented weapons scanners as well as field testing different technologies at six HCPS sites. Through collaboration, we learned a lot about the various types of weapons scanning technologies that are available, the operational considerations, staff training protocols, and the overall impact on student safety. That combined with the firsthand experience of the field test enabled us to assess the feasibility, effectiveness, and appropriate implementation of weapons scanners in our own divisions. An essential part of our evaluation process was to hear from parents, teachers, and students to get their perspectives on school safety. First, we did so through surveys and focus groups at field testing schools. Then, all ACPS families and staff were asked to complete a brief survey to share their feedback and perspectives on school safety measures, including weapons scanners and additional school security officers. During the two-week survey window, we collected 6,873 responses in five languages. A total of 77% or 5,280 of the survey participants are parents of ACPS students and 9% of those are parents and ACPS staff members. The survey responses reflected significant input from elementary school families, which is representative of our overall school community, as elementary students make up 45% of our total student population of roughly 50,000 students in pre-K and through grades through grade 12. The survey had eight questions and asked participants to indicate their level of agreement with statements regarding general safety, weapons scanners, and staffing. Response choices included strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, and I can't answer this. A few of the highlights are noted here. An overwhelming majority of participants agreed that visible security measures and additional security staff would make them feel more safe. Finally, there was a robust support for making the investment in scanners at all grade levels. The support was strongest at the high school level. 60% of the respondents strongly agreed and agreed that families, students, and staff feel safe at HCPS. This is not surprising, given national-wide trends in gun violence. 75% of the respondents strongly agreed and agreed that visible security measures, including metal detectors or weapons scanners, would make them and their children and students feel more safe and less fearful of harm. But 10% more, or 85%, of the respondents strongly agreed and agreed that additional school security staff in the school building would make them and their children and students feel more safe and less fearful of harm. 80% of participants strongly agreed and agreed that having weapons scanners in the schools would make them worry less about physical safety for themselves and their children and students. 64% of the respondents strongly agreed and agreed that having weapons scanners in the schools would positively impact staff and student mental health. 20% disagreed or strongly disagreed with the statement. It is also notable here that 16% of respondents said that they could not answer the question. When asked about whether it would be worth investing in weapons scanners, the greatest support was at the high school level with 82% of the respondents saying they strongly agreed and agreed. 79% of the respondents strongly agreed and agreed with investments in scanners in middle school, and elementary came in with 68%. The most disagreement was found at the elementary school level with 20% of respondents disagreeing or strongly disagreeing. Meanwhile, 10% to 12% of respondents felt that they could not answer the question at either grade level or any grade level. 65% of the respondents strongly agreed and agreed that having an SSO for each ACPS elementary school would make them worry less and physically safe for themselves and their children and students. However, 27% selected "I can't answer" for this question. Only 8% of the participants disagreed or strongly disagreed with the statement. When asked about whether it would be worth the financial or staff investments to hire additional SSOs, 77% of the respondents strongly agreed and agreed for the elementary schools. 81% strongly agreed and agreed at the middle schools, and 83% of the respondents strongly agreed and agreed for high schools. Again, we really appreciate everyone who participated in the survey. It is clear from the responses that our community is in support of additional visible security measures and additional security staff and believes it would make it feel more safe. We have used this feedback to inform our recommendations for a phased implementation of additional measures. Given all we have learned from our last few months, we are bringing forward administrative recommendations today for your consideration. These include investments in both additional safety personnel through our SSOs and weapons Administrative recommends phasing in implementation as well as follows. Installing weapons scanners and adding one additional SSO at each high school. Hiring one SSO for each elementary school. Installing weapons scanners and hiring one additional SSO at each middle school. And finally, installing weapons scanners at elementary schools. As you know, this is a complicated process, and it will take the division at least a year to phase in the recommendation-acquired scanners, hirings, and provided training. With the board's support, HCPS will begin this phased implementation by doing the following. Initiate the procurement of weapons scanners technology using current FY23 technology funds. Add approximately 75 new SSO positions, which we will add one SSO to each elementary school as well as additional SSOs for secondary schools. We will begin recruiting now for the new positions as well as making plans for a strengthened internal management structure, along with comprehensive SSO training plans for the '23-'24 school year. Also, to ensure updated language related to weapons scanners in addition to current language around metal detectors, we will bring forward proposed policy changes at the June 22 meeting. Knowing that the school board shared our sense of urgency to move forward, we are seeking you to support and proceed with the recommendations I've just outlined. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Mr. Pritchard, we do appreciate Dr. Cashwell, you and your team bringing us this safety plan sooner versus later and definitely before our June 22 meeting because, as the board expressed back in April, timing is of the essence where safety is concerned. So, thank you so much. Let's see, I know we have questions and comments today. Let's start with Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I want to reiterate what you just said. I'm sure my colleagues will agree as well. Now, Dr. Cashwell, thank you and your staff for bringing forth these recommendations today. The data shows that there may be a strong correlation between visible security measures, including metal detectors, weapons scanners, and perception of safety for our students, family, and staff. I appreciate this breakdown of the survey data. I believe that as we move forward with implementing some of these additional safety layers and make the necessary policy changes, we prioritize making sure that we hear the voices of our community to ensure that we are meeting our tenant goals without causing more unintentional social-emotional harm or creating a culture that results in more policing of our black and brown students. As a parent and board member, I know we all want to ensure our students and staff are safe, so it would be imperative that this continues to be a regular checkpoint with our students and staff and community to ensure we're achieving those implied improved safety outcomes. Dr. Cashwell or Mr. Pritchard, as replies relates to timelines, what will need to be considered before the board receives a solid timeline regarding these phased implementations?
Sure. So, you know, we've given a rough estimate, knowing that if the board were to support our recommendation, we'd move forward really immediately following this meeting on procuring. So, we know that timelines varied and lead times on delivery, but we're hearing about eight weeks. So, assuming we're able to move forward with your support, you know, our thought would be that these are in place in our high schools beginning in the fall and as other equipments available. We then begin in middle and elementary school. Again, noting that having staff on hand to make sure the implementation is appropriate and they're used as intended, that will be another factor that will play into it. But, you know, our goal will be to move as swiftly as we're able to procure the items and hire staff.
As a point of recollection, do we classify any of our schools as higher risk as it relates to safety or any other type of classification, similar to how we have identified schools in the past that required additional SROs? I'm talking based on incidents where weapons have been found or retrieved, incidents of bullying that have been reported through anonymous alerts, school bus incidents reports. If so, will these schools be prioritized in a way as it relates to the safety technology and safety personnel?
There's no specific designation, but we do look specifically at every school's data, and our safety team and our school leadership team and directors work individually to make sure that we're supporting each building based on their needs and differentiating those supports, whether it be on size, in the number of students enrolled, the campus setup, the style of the campus, and what's feasible for monitoring it. So, we certainly work to make sure we're allocating staff and resources based on the individual needs of schools.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. Are we considering, Mr. Pritchard, the role of trained volunteers to help with the supportive functions that all of our schools receive, an equitable distribution of safety support? We already know some of our schools may have higher needs, and we are already working on ways to address staffing shortages for our academic needs at some of our opportunity schools. So, as it relates to staffing needs to address the additional layers of security, we may want to consider partnering with the community. Is that a feasible option?
Well, there are a number of ways volunteers can be involved in our schools. You know, greeting students, helping direct students, those sorts of things when there are large community events. So, I mean, I think that's certainly possible when it comes to the morning routines in our buildings and making those smoother with this added layer. But when it comes to actually implementing the weapons scanner technology, we would want to make sure we're leaning on trained staff. That would be our administrators, our school resource officers, and our school security officers, and any other trained personnel within the school. And, you know, one of the things we've looked at related to, for example, SROs and the special training they have, having a cadre of substitutes and floaters to assist where there may be greater need. The same thing with our recommendation related to the school security officers would allow us to have some additional, who would be able to assist as needed where there might be additional need.
Well, thank you. I support this, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Atkins?
So, I agree with all my colleagues on thanking you for being thoughtful and moving swiftly. And so, I agree with moving as quickly as we can and appreciate the data that supports movement forward. And I appreciate the way in which the data was shared. It's easier to discern in this way, also for the public. So, I wanted to make a note of that, that I noticed that. Additionally, you know, this is one piece of safety updates. There were several other ideas that were presented, whether they were from adults or students. One of them was ID cards. One of them was having quarterly door checks. We know that folks prop doors open. We are paying attention to that. So, I would like for you to consider perhaps in the next safety update, because there are several things that we're doing in addition to this particular topic, but please bring forth where we are on some of the other ideas and suggestions that were recommended as well in our last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogburn?
Thank you. And I think we're going to echo each other a little bit, but I really am appreciative of getting this as quickly as we had. I know people may think it's taken a while, but we've done our due diligence, and that's thanks to Mr. Pritchard and the whole staff. But one of the things, Mr. Pritchard, that you said that really resonated with me was the word "visible" and that the visible deterrent. And so, it leads me to say that, I mean, visible deterrent, that's great, but one of the things that was shared in the survey was that some kids feel uncomfortable by that visible deterrent. So, I wonder if we're going to be working on a plan, especially at the elementary level, to make kids comfortable with this change? Because there were several references to the mental health aspect of this, on the positive and the negative. And so, obviously, we want to make our kids safer. It is that visible deterrent. That's the purpose. But there were requests from mental health services. There were a lot of survey results around this topic, so I'm curious.
Yeah, I'd like to provide additional kudos to Lenny and the entire leadership team for their partnership on this effort and this very specific topic. So, you know, one of the things I think was done really well in the field test was learning how we can best prepare students, our community, our staff, and what they can expect when they arrive at school and have a different procedure, making sure our school counseling teams were prepared ahead of time. They know which students they work with that may have some specific anxiety related to this, working with our students in exceptional education to make sure that, you know, we have appropriate social stories that may meet their needs in advance of adding something new or different. And so, you know, that was one of the reasons I believe our field test was very successful and not disruptive, where we worked through this at all levels, elementary, middle, and high. And so, for a division-wide implementation, would repeat that process of making sure there's buy-in related to those support teams and building understanding and awareness. We had videos we were able to share of what it would look like before students arrived and encountered this.
I think that is, that's wonderful. I really appreciate that due diligence because, you know, we have to look at this as we are big-picture people. We have to look at the, every aspect of this, and that's part of it. I mean, there were some comments in the surveys about mental health services and worrying about the mental health of our students. And granted, there are some people that think we shouldn't be spending this money. We should be investing it in mental health services. But it sounds like to me we're doing that, covering that base as far as this goes, but we can't forget all of the other layers of mental health services that we do have for our students. So, to me, I agree, this is obviously the right step. Do have a couple more questions, though. Well, comment first. In the SSOs in the elementary schools, I have had constituents ask for that for a long time, but we used to have them, and now they're coming back, so I'm really appreciative of that. Just wanted to address, though, some of the comments that were made from parents and the focus groups and the survey about our campus schools. And there were some concerns expressed. Not every person was scanned because of, you know, multiple entry points and that kind of thing. I think one of the folks from Verona said, "We don't have a choke point. There is no single location." So, how will we, or is that part of this upcoming process to plan? Because I have campus schools, we all do. I'm just curious about this aspect.
And the thing that was interesting, going through these campus-style schools and then we realized the challenges they present, looking at what we captured on a day-to-day basis while we were there and matching it up with their daily attendance. I mean, we were at, you know, 95-plus percentage of capturing students. At two choke points at each of those schools, there's always going to be that area. Every school will tell you that they have one, two, or three entrances, but we didn't occur any of the three. It was just one or two. We were able to capture those. It's that little area that of students parking somewhere and walking on the campus that we could identify, and we were able, as we did that, start moving administrators over there and pushing them around to the choke point.
Okay.
So, I felt like we really did a great job. And I know one day, at one of our particular campus-style schools, we captured 98% of the students that day that were on attendance.
And I would add on to this because I know this was a learning for me when I went out and watched the field test. What's, you know, the difference between, for example, the stand-up metal detectors that you're walking through, the weapons scanners are mobile, portable, and they're weatherproof, and they can be used at various points throughout a campus. And so, that's excellent feedback you're mentioning from constituents. And the team really thought through and learned during the field test how to be able to implement a variety of entry points and do so at all campus styles and types.
Well, and I would assume that this is going to be part of that education of our students and our staff. This is where you come in, no matter, like you said, the campus setup is going to determine the process, and the kids will learn it. It's an adjustment period. But some of the other feedback that I read in our, the report in our survey results is about the process itself for kids coming through in the morning, that bus delays, there were kids who were getting late to class, and all of that. It was disruptive to the first block because kids were staggering in. And I'm assuming that that will smooth out as, and speed up a little bit, as kids get used to it, but also as the staff and everybody get used to the process. Am I right about that?
Yeah, and some of that data is from our field test, where, remember, we were also using the walk-through scanners. And so, that takes into account data from that experience as well, and that was a slower process. But certainly with the weapons scanners, I know that the team noted, you know, almost on-time class, you know, delivery of students to class, other than perhaps a late bus. The scanning process wasn't a reason a student was late. And so, you know, but we were still able to scan those who came through on a late bus and get them to class quickly.
And I bring that up just so that anyone who's listening can get that feedback that, you know, that we did screen all these kids. It is a process. It will smooth out over time, which I think is important for the public to know. Just one other comment. I think one of the things that we have stressed, as we have talked multiple times about this and all of our other security plan aspects, is that this is one layer. And I think as we educate our constituents about this and we go forward with the implementation of this, we've got to keep reminding the public that this is just one more layer. And of all of the other things that we are doing, and I am particularly appreciative of the support we're getting from the county on this initiative. Because when we met with the Board of Supervisors last, they expressed real support for this plan. They're helping, obviously, the funding is there. And so, I think that we have to continue to, you know, stress both of those things, that this is supported by our county, but it's also one layer of all of the things that we're doing. Only one other thing, and that was just a little note of appreciation, because we have, and I think Ms. Cox's team is so instrumental in getting the word out of the things that we've been doing lately about the Be Smart tools that we've been sharing through our bridge builders and through the binder. Because I had a lot of parents asking, "Are we going to," and I know Mrs. Shea brought this up, "about gun safety and that aspect of one of the layers of safety initiatives that we're doing?" And I just wanted to just remind everybody that we are doing that. We are sharing gun safety information, and thank the Henrico Police just put that out as well. But just appreciate the fact that we are doing that. And, Dr. Cashwell, I know that that has been ongoing work, and I've had a number of people just recently say, you know, "We're so appreciative that that is coming along with this," that it's, again, that multi-layered approach. But anyway, thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogburn. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. When we began this process, I'll admit, I was very uncertain about this idea. But as we've gone through the process, there has been thoughtful field testing, there's been learning from other divisions, and there's been listening to the community. Additionally, this plan addresses my concern of the impact on staff by adding additional staffing. I would just like for us to make sure we continue to be mindful as we implement that this doesn't become an extra-duty load on staff to monitor this sustainably. And so, with that, I support your recommendation. School safety has to be a community effort. And to echo Ms. Ogburn, I'd like to thank our partners at the Henrico Police Department for their message this week on safe storage. If students do not have access to weapons, they cannot bring them to school. And so, to continue to share that information on safe storage, I anticipate, Dr. Cashwell, that some of this information will go in our weekly communication to families and would just ask if we could also include that image that the HPD put together for us on safe storage and include that in our weekly communication as well as we look to tackle this from all angles. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea, especially for highlighting where we can amplify the HPD message of how to safely store weapons so that they don't end up in our schools. Do we have an estimate of what this plan would cost to Mrs. Ogburn's point? Because some folks have said, "Hey, this money might be better spent as to mental health," which we are supporting mental health as well. Dr. Cashwell, do you just care to share a little bit about that?
I'm pleased to. So, you know, certainly, getting to the point related to mental health, personnel, school counselors, that's been an ongoing effort. This board has prioritized over a number of recent budgets, adding additional, 40 additional school counselors, additional personnel for school-based mental health teams. You know, we just launched our Full Service Community Learning Center, where we've brought together wraparound supports, including partnership with Henrico Mental Health. There are a number of other efforts that are too lengthy to list out here, but it's certainly not one or the other. It's both and. And so, I want to make sure it's clear that our investment in school safety and student well-being, you know, considers all of those pieces. It's holistic. And so, we're making sure we continue to make those investments as well as the technology investments to make sure that our layers of security are robust, including in the implementation of additional camera systems, you know, securely, web filtering. And as safety, you know, often involves technology upgrades, and certainly appreciate the board's support related to the addition of the weapons scanners as another layer, not the one thing, you know, and it's a comprehensive approach. So, related to pricing, you know, we certainly have an idea of estimated pricing related to the type of unit we're looking for. We'd still need to work through that process. We have an approximate number of scanners we know we would need to serve our schools and would be able to cover that purchase with technology funds in this fiscal year so that we're prepared for the next school year.
Okay, so, we don't intend for it to cost money that we don't have, of course, right? And it's coming, I believe you said, Mr. Pritchard, from the IT budget?
Technology.
So, there's funding there? Yes, technology budget? Okay. And then, it's going to take a year to phase in. Do we think we'll get it done before then? Is that just a guesstimate? What do we think are going to be our hurdles there?
Well, certainly procurement, right? So, you know, we're getting, having not made a purchase, we can guess that, you know, from preliminary conversations with various places where these technologies are available, the lead time could be up to about eight weeks. And, you know, of course, that's a rough estimate for now. And so, we would want to begin, of course, by prioritizing our high schools. So, what would become available first? We would start there. You know, there are ready staff in our secondary schools, as they already have SSOs, SROs, and admin teams. And we've learned from our field test that while we want to add that additional SSO to make it possible, there's more of a staffing infrastructure there. SSOs would be new to our elementary schools. We anticipate it taking time to recruit and bring those folks onboard, but we'll certainly begin that right away, given the board's support. So, you know, to say that it could be up to a year, but we certainly would go faster as we're able, all the way along.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify what the year meant, right? What the year meant? What challenges do we expect? And what the phase in would look like? I'd like to specifically thank you for including student voice in this, as well as, you know, not just all of our stakeholders, but especially our students. I know the, I had the privilege of sitting with the superintendent Student Advisory Committee, and they shared back specifically as to safety, as did some student advocacy that came in via email to my board colleagues and myself, that the students feel very strongly about feeling safe in schools and how soon would this happen. So, just thank you for highlighting student voice, because it wasn't, did the students participate in this? The students participated in the focus groups, correct?
That's right, at the field test schools.
So, I just wanted to highlight how we got that student voice so that it's represented. And then, as to the communication of the safety efforts and our plan, subject to, I think I'm hearing full board support today, what does that communication plan look like? And that may be you, Dr. Cashwell, or Mrs. Cox. And what does it look like specifically? I'm thinking that it's bigger picture. It's not just this layer of safety effort. It's all of our safety efforts in conjunction with It's all of our safety efforts in conjunction with changes to student code of conduct that we want to communicate, that are so important for our families to know as we start the next school year. What is our plan there? Do we plan to message all summer, and then, of course, at our open houses?
Yes, ma'am. We plan to message throughout the summer, specifically about the school environment with the additional weapon scanners and what families should expect for those that were not part of the field test. We will also have messaging related to the code of conduct, as you mentioned. We are planning to do some videos involving students, talking about the code of conduct, and then also some dramatizations and reenactments, if you will, about the code of student conduct, what's right, what's wrong. And then, again, sharing with families throughout the summer, the, the very detailed and multi-tiered safety plans that we have in place. That will be through our new family rapid notification system, that also includes like a news feed that you would see on your social media, so we can have graphics and explanatory infographics there. We'll be having some message points and conversations that PTAs can use, and that we can attend events with our PTA partners and school partners, and with family and community engagement. And I am not trying to put Adrian on the spot here, but we've talked in the past around the big back-to-school kickoff and how we might be able to partner with not only the safety team here, but Henrico Police to talk about gun safety and those types of things at the event.
Great. Thank you so much. It's clear that we all play a role in safety, and I definitely support this added layer of the weapon scanners. And if I'm hearing the Board correctly, they, everyone supports this effort. I believe each member has indicated their support for it, and I would just like to highlight, this is an operational item, which is why the Board is not voting on it today while we're express, although we are expressing our support for the plan you put forward, Dr. Cashwell. So, thank you and your team.
Thank you for your support and your ongoing support around the topic of school safety and, and the many layers and investments we've made over the previous years as we continue to make sure we're providing a safe school environment. And I know you've thanked Mr. Pritchard and team, but there are some members of our safety team here as well. I see John and AJ, at least, if, I'd just like them to stand and be recognized, too, because this, this has been an incredible effort. Thank you so much. And we will begin operationalizing our next steps, and we'll certainly keep the Board informed as we move along, as well as the communication efforts Mrs. Cox mentioned. We look forward to sharing next steps and, and getting to work.